Good evening, everybody. Tonight's Thursday, April 11, 2019. It's eight o'clock. We're in the Mathur Center Cafe Station of Town Hall. And it's the Darian Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. We're going to start with a couple items as a general meeting. Kevin, you want to get started?
Sure, there are two items on the general meeting. The first item is deliberation and possible decision regarding coastal site plan review number 339 and flood damage prevention application number 222. Landfilling and regrading application number 452. John Erickson's 17-day water drive proposal to raise the existing dwelling and construct a new residence during the same location and install a new stormwater management system and reform related site development activities within regulated areas.
I wasn't here for this one, so if one of you carry on the discussion if there's any questions.
I had one. Oh, I'm sorry.
Chairman, you want to just refresh your way of what we did here?
Sure. You may recall, this was a public hearing on March 26th. The proposal is to tear down an existing dwelling in Merotan Bay on Bay Water Drive, which is right down the water, and construct a new house, which would comply entirely with the flood regulations. It was a very straightforward public hearing. The applicant chairman talked about how the new house would comply with elevations, the AC units and generators, maybe on platform and screens. We talked during the hearing about the fact that the commission would require an elevation certificate to certify that everything was done properly, including the flood vents. So it's a straightforward draft resolution that you have in your package.
We had no comments, I recall, from the residents from the neighborhood. The only thing that I saw here was one typo in documents as property versus property, page two, number six. Yes. I have no comments.
Nope.
Jim Ryan?
Not for me.
Okay, Johnny, assume you're standing.
So can we get a motion to approve with that minor change? The only, I'm sorry, the only other very minor change to the resolution will be the name of the property owner will be changed to LLC. Okay, very minor change. Would those do change? Can I get my shit reviewed?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Standing, so you guys.
Three, zero, one.
Got a little exercise. And the approval of minutes, again, I wasn't here, so I won't stand for this one.
I read the minutes. I had no changes to the minutes. Kevin?
Nope.
Chairman, any change to this?
I did not.
I didn't.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Kevin.
I'll get to approve of it.
Oh, motion approved of that?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor.
There are seven items in the public hearing. First item, site plan application number 304, landfilling and regrading application number 450, town area to our property between lane, open to construct a walking path, as well as six parallel parking spaces on Duck Day Lane, which is into the north side of the property and to reform related site development activities. The path is proposed to loop around the subject property with a five-foot-wide crushstone path along the northwest and south property avenues, with a two-foot-wide wooden plank board block along the eastern boundary running north-south. The length of the path is 1,044 feet and is approximately quarter to 20 feet of the length of the board block. A section of path located on Hiller property would be part of a larger 1.15 mile path inclusive of the Darian High School property. The five-acre subject property is located on the south side of Duck Day Lane, approximately 400 feet east of its own section of power street which road, and is shown on assessed map number nine as lot number 128A, and is located in R1 and R2.
Can you read this second one also?
Site plan application number 273E, flood damage prevention application number 354A, and flood damage prevention application number 23F, town of Darian, Darian High School and the High School Lane. Proposal to construct a 5,050-foot cross-country path drilling around the perimeter of the subject property and reform related site development activities. The five-foot wide path will be constructed with crushstone group of forested areas on the property and grass along the edges of existing athletic fields. The section of path located on the high school property would be part of a larger 1.15 mile path inclusive of the Hiller property. The 58.57-acre property is located on the north side of High School Lane, approximately 400 feet west of its intersection with Hill 6 Road, and is shown on assessed map number nine as lots number 80 and 81, and is located in the R2 zone, both that been opened on the 17th.
So just a couple words before we immediately continue these. The first one, the site plan application is just simply landfilling and regrading application. I watched the EPC hearing. What date was the last, the two hearings you recall?
The EPC hearings would be the first Wednesdays in March. So this past week and the first Wednesday in March.
Okay. And there was a lot of discussion over parking uses, a number of garbage culverts being clogged. That's not going to be our purview in this. We're going to be just looking at minor regrading, so minor that Jeremy and I originally had a discussion whether or not to even do a public hearing or a public site plan review. So I just want to set expectations when we continue this hearing, and that will be continued until?
Tuesday, May 7th, 8:00 p.m. We'll be in room 206 of Town Hall.
Okay. And the reason that is, is the town has a right to use the property as a dedicated parkland for park-like uses. It's a, as a right use in our zoning regulations. So that's why we don't have special permit hearings or anything like that. On the second one regarding Darian High School, very similarly, we're looking at minor regrading as a site plan review. And then there is a flood damage prevention application. That's because Darian High School sits in a flood zone?
A portion of the high school property, a portion of the path, will be in the flood zone, so the applicant's going to have to prove that the work is not going to be patently.
And then lastly, since the Darian Athletic Foundation is involved in this, I'm going to put into the file Mahalsky versus Darian et al. You know, I'm going to look at this with an open mind and will not be biased, but given previous accusations, I like to put that in that Darian Athletic Foundation is involved. So we're also going to immediately continue this hearing to May 7, 2019, in room?
206 of Town Hall at 8:00 p.m.
Okay, great. Public comment will be received at those meetings and?
Right, the applicant will give a presentation and will take public comment. Will also take comment in writing for anyone who wants to submit anything before that.
Okay, perfect. So next, Kevin. Just the titles for the next.
Yep. Continuation of public hearing regarding amendments to the Darian zoning regulation COZR 1-2019 and Darian zoning map COZN 1-2019 put forth by the Darian Planning and Zoning Commission.
You have all of them?
Yep, sorry. Continuation of public hearing regarding amendments to the zoning map COZN 2-2019 put forth by the Darian Planning and Zoning Commission, and amendments to the zoning map COZN 3-2019 put forth by the Darian Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. And that was the specific property rezonings of 273 West Avenue, 1973 Boston Post Road, Rings End Road, 164 Old Kings Highway South, 55 Boston Post Road, and 1441 Boston Post Road. Who wants to get started, Mr. Chalter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Glenn Chalter from Planometrics. I'm Paul. Thank you, Bonnie.
Not a problem, Glenn. Thank you.
My name is Steve Sopron.
My name is Glenn Chalter from Planometrics. I've worked with the commission over the past four or five years, both on the plan of conservation and development, changes to the sign regulations, which brings us to this evening. One of the recommendations in the plan of conservation and development was to revisit our business zoning in town, to update it for the types of issues that Darian faces today and is likely to face in the future, and some of the distinctions between the different business districts to see if changes could be made. The changes involve a combination of different business zoning districts. In some cases, we had design business one and design business two. We had three different office zones. We had two service businesses, districts. We had an overlay zone in the Road Heights, and a number of changes have been made. Those essentially fall into four major categories. We modified the zoning districts overall. We converted the New Road Heights area from an overlay district with a property owner could opt into, to a grounded zone, which would apply to development in that area, and implement the vision in the plan of conservation and development to try to make it a walkable pedestrian-friendly village area, as opposed to its history, if you will, which is more automobile-oriented, taking advantage of the train station, et cetera. We've removed some of the distinctions between the service business and the service business east zones, combined those into a service business zone, combined the design business one and two zones into a design business zone. And the three different office districts, OB, DOR1, and DOR5, have been all merged into a design office districts. So that's the major nature, if you will, of the district changes. In addition, we've simplified some of the food-related uses. We had a number of different categories and descriptions in the different zoning districts of what types of uses were allowed. It caused confusion on occasion. We've attempted to create a structure of a full-service restaurant, a quick-service restaurant, a retail food establishment, and accessory food service. Made those terms consistent between the different zoning districts. And we've also allowed restaurants in the neighborhood business zones by a special permit, and we do actually have some restaurants in that zone today. We revisited some of the permitted uses in the different districts. We've allowed office and personal service uses in the design commercial district, which is really the Goodwife Shopping Center primarily. We deleted certain requirements for hotel, motel, or inn. We expanded some of the uses within the Darian office zones, and clarified what zones allow drive-through food, which ones do not, and clarified which zones will specifically allow for parking structures. Last, Mr. Chairman, the major changes also in the parking requirements. We modified some of the parking requirements for certain categories of uses to better reflect what is the parking experience for these types of uses, and to address the new categories of uses in food service restaurants. There is a related issue in terms of clarifying the nature of the municipal use zone as an overlay district, and a minor amendment, which shows men's references from the Regional Planning Agency to the Western Connecticut Council of Governments, because the name of that entity has changed.
Okay, not to get confused, this is just a clarification in this agenda item. We're definitely going to talk about the municipal use zone map changes in the next agenda item, but just?
This is just an overview, if you will, refreshing from where we?
No, no, but clarify the nature of the municipal use zone. It was just a minor clarification.
Right, that's the handout that's there on the table. This is really to better clarify the existing regulation, adding the word overlay to make it clear it's overlay, to clarify that there's, that permitted accessory uses still require a special permit, so there's no confusion later on. And then to, again, as it comes over, they clarify that there's an underlying zone as well. So the wording that we've been working on with Mr. Chalter is really, as staff has interpreted it through the years, Mr. Chalter believed it was most appropriate to make that as clear as possible.
Right. And so we will be talking about the map changes in the next agenda item, which I think everybody is probably here for a map classification. Although you're more than welcome to talk about the classification.
Mr. Chairman, there's a map of the zone changes over here. In addition, I have a map here on the screen in terms of the zoning changes. Again, the service business districts have been combined, the design business districts have been combined, and the office zones have been combined. The New Road Heights zone was turned into the ground zone.
It's been proposed to be combined.
Proposed, correct. There are six specific zone changes. Do you want to hold on these? You want to just give it over?
Hold right there for a second for commissioner questions. Does anybody need to get up to speed on anything Glenn just discussed? All right, go ahead.
So in addition, I'm not quite sure on the number of the applications. There are six specific zone changes that are being proposed at the present time as well. These are somewhat unique situations, and that's why they've been identified separately. The first is the location of 273 West Avenue, which is the corner, or not really the corner, but Edgerton West, sorry, Heights Road is here, Palmer Market is here, People's Bank is here. There are two properties which are combined in ownership, which are in a DC district, but they're used residentially. Access, if they were to try to access West Avenue with a commercial use, it could be challenging, so the suggestion for the commission's consideration was that those be placed in the residential district. If there's property consolidation in the future, those could be changed to a business zone. So this is an item for your consideration this evening.
So again, there's two residential houses and a commercial zone?
No. There are four lots between People's Bank and the pedestrian accessway here. Each of the two lots are essentially merged, merge is not the right word, they are used as a single unit. So on this property, which is in a residential district, I think the house straddles the line and the garage is on one of the lots. And on the two properties here, which we're proposing for consideration, the house, I believe, is on one of the parcels. There are two historic parcels.
You get that right?
Generally correct.
The other proposal, 1973 Boston Post Road, is in the neighborhood business district. The rear of the properties extends back, and a portion of the rear of the property is in a residential zoning district. I don't think I have the polygon quite right on this graphic here. I think this shows the area being bigger than what is the proposal.
It would be much, it would be smaller than that. It's the area right behind where the Puritan used to be. The, currently, this is the NB zone.
Correct.
At the corner of Merotan Avenue and Boston Post Road. And in that case, there's a 100-foot setback from Boston Post Road as the existing NB district, and it just slices off a little piece of this property, and the commission felt it might be more appropriate to have that zone boundary line be coincident with the north property line of 1973 Post Road.
The next location is almost right across the street from Route 1, Rings End Road, which heads south. There is a small property, a second property in, which is almost, I think it's .06 acres. It's not particularly large. It's almost all a house and one space, I believe, for a car. You may recall, the last meeting, there was a comment whether or not changing this zone would create a buffer hardship or challenge, if you will, for the front property. So this is one the commission may want to consider, but this is another one that's used residentially today and has been for many years. The next site is the corner of Route 1 and Cross Street. We have the car dealership here, the library's over here, this is an office building, property in the back, which is, again, in a commercial district, used residentially. The concern, again, would be what happens if somebody proposes a commercial use in this situation, which would be accessed from the residential district? So it was offered for the commission's considerations to whether this should be a residential zone or a business zone. We had a property owner show up at our meeting last month and suggest that we prefer to stay in the business zone. The next one is 55 Boston Post Road. This is really at the Norwalk Line here, TD Bank. Again, the zone line that was originally drawn here, maybe 15 years ago, was a consistent setback from Route 1. Actually, the property line is here. This area is unused, it's planted, et cetera, but also cannot be used for coverage. And so the suggestion here for the commission's consideration would be to look at that triangular area and consider its possibly use in the business district as part of the business property. I think the next site is 1441 Boston Post Road. This is the library. Library's a little complicated. It falls into two different zones today, and it also is subject to the municipal use overlay district, but the suggestion here is to change the underlying zoning district to one district, which is consistent with the zones around it. So that is the issue, which is up for the commission's consideration. So those are the six specific changes which are also proposed. I have all the changes of the actual text here if we need to refer to them, but it's about 50 pages, so I won't go through them.
Okay, so that's?
That's the overview. I started the hearing back in May 19th, so this is a continuation of that.
All right. So Jerry, can you just review what property owners you heard from?
Sure. Some of the property owners relative to the map change are here tonight to speak. Some of the neighbors are here tonight as well, but we?
So might I suggest you give some input whether we heard from somebody, we call that address out. Anybody wants to speak on that specific address can come up.
Yeah, just grab the microphone and?
So we're going to start with 273 West Avenue.
But why don't we get through the notes first?
Yeah, well, he's got to go through all of them.
Yep.
So 273, what do you have?
273, you may recall, last time the hearing was continued as the property owner of 273 was not able to attend. She is here this evening to give her thoughts on the property and the proposal by the commission.
Okay. And what, yeah, grab the mic if you were mine, but before you started, what, did you get to watch her here? Okay. So the message I've been trying to convey to the individual property owners is that we really want to hear your input, and we're going to take it. These are individual properties or your properties? We'll change, we're trying to do from a zoning perspective, a planning perspective, what makes sense, but if you don't think it makes sense, you have a lot of input here, okay?
Thank you very much.
So just so you do that. So if you could give your name and your, well, your address, I think we know.
Sure. My name's Holly Weatherby. I am an owner of 273 West Avenue, and my husband here, also with John Dickerson. I'd like to thank Mr. Ginsburg and the commission first for continuing the item, given we were not available. I have received the notice and discussed the item with Mr. Ginsburg. At this point, it's our position, our request, that we keep the property zoned as it is. This would preserve any opportunity we have for sale of all or part of the property to an adjacent landowner. There is some history, and I could certainly go into this if we'd like, but that is our request right now, and we understand the goals, but that would certainly preserve any opportunity we may have. And if you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? I think you made it pretty clear.
You own all four lots.
We own 27, it's 273 is our 250 by 150 lots, and they're directly next to People's Bank.
Two lots.
Two lots, so I own two lots.
Two of the four.
Correct. 279 is.
Would anybody else like to talk to 273 West Avenue? All right, seeing them, we'll move on to 1973 Boston Post Road. Jeremy, you have any?
I don't think anyone has spoken to me about that. Between seconds, and then?
I haven't, no.
That's the area, the small area behind the Puritan?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anybody here to talk to 1973? And everybody with a notice, probably. Okay, 6 Rings End Road. Jeremy, Alan, if you can grab the mic there.
Sure, I just wanted to pass this letter to you. I don't feel that we have copies.
Well, I remember that you guys wanted to speak to staff, figure it out, use your brother as counsel and?
Yes, I'm John Tivitts, the owner of 1910 Post Road, and my brother could not be here tonight, so much to his chagrin, I get to talk about this. I'm just reiterating what was said at the earlier meeting, but I appreciate the effort that has been made to simplify some of these quirky little situations that exist throughout the town. However, just reiterating the point that we made briefly at the last meeting, that an unintended, I think, consequence of this change would be to create a buffer zone, excuse me, I'm sorry, to create a buffer on this property that does not exist there right now. And I submitted a letter from a commercial real estate broker that states that he feels that this would significantly negatively affect the value of my property. It's a very old building, and at some point, either I or a future owner will want to build a new building there. It's already a complicated property, and to impose this, 15, I think it's 15, after meeting with Jeremy, it's 15 rather than 25 that we thought it was, still would make a difficult lot even more difficult to redevelop.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? Okay, thanks for your?
Thank you.
Kelly Anderson, hello.
Where are we now? 164 Old Kings Highway South.
You may recall, at the last public hearing, the property owner had sent a letter, and I believe he came to the hearing and expressed his desire not to have his property rezoned, and then I think he also had a letter in the file from a member of the public who lives across Old Kings Highway who said, she would prefer that he was?
Okay, but the property owner was clear that did not want it rezoned. Anybody want to speak to that? Want to see any? Okay, so then we'll go to 55 Boston Post Road.
That is the back of TD Bank. We did send notice not only to the property owner, but the folks around that property. I do not think it's, the property owner's here tonight, but?
Well, and then we also heard from an adjacent?
West Norwalk Road.
West Norwalk Road, just asking about the easement. This one, basically nothing can be built back there anyway, so. Okay. And then 1441 Boston Post Road is the library. You received a letter from the library director?
I did speak to Alan Gray, and he's aware of the proposal. It's, it's, like I said, right now, there's split zone.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that had an MU overlay.
It does have an MU overlay, which was used at the library, which we'll be talking more about later tonight, to allow them to be with the extra height. So that is likely the way they will develop the property if they were to add them to the future. The underlying zone is, for them, probably not a big deal either way, but it just, right now, they're basically, it's very difficult to explain, because they, half the property's in one zone, half's in the other. It's?
It's already MU overlay. Half of it, half of it's not correct.
I thought the whole property.
Oh, I'm sorry, but we're?
Rezone the underlying?
The underlying zone, I'm sorry. So the MU exists on the property already. We don't have the, that's why it's not on the list. Yeah. Okay. Well, just to clean up the underlying zone. Okay, so we're done with that section. Oh, just go ahead.
So we're going to go, the library is in favor of revision.
They didn't send?
Yes or no, or?
They didn't send anything clearly. Either way, it doesn't make a difference.
Okay. So basically, the individual amendments to zoning map. Would anybody like to comment any further on those individual amendments? I'm sorry, I missed?
I'm here for the amendment, not for the map change.
He's here for the rights.
The rights, okay. Anybody else? Like, could I get a motion to close amendments to zoning map COZM number 2, 2019, put forth by Darian zoning plan?
Motion to close that.
Give me a second?
A second?
All in favor? Okay, so now we're going to work our way back up and talk about the zoning, the amendments to zoning regulations and the consolidation of business. So I'd like to start with Ms. Sabatakas first, because you submitted a letter, and I feel like this is the most discussed purpose change. So if you, will I introduce yourself first?
Hi, Amy Sabatakas, R.C. Law Group. I represent the fellows who live behind the SB zone on West Avenue.
Okay, so at the last hearing, I thought there was consensus that we're, that if we, we have two choices, either go forward and merge as proposed, or leave as is. You submitted a letter, though, with another additional change.
Correct. So my, the first letter that I submitted suggested that rather, that, part of this is that I think that what you're doing makes a lot of sense, especially along the Boston Post Road. And so what I had suggested was maybe do what you're planning on doing in the SB zones, but take this lot and put it into a different zone. And as we discussed at the hearing, that is really, that's not what was noticed, and that doesn't seem like a proper way to move forward. And at the hearing, you actually asked me, well, can you go through and just redline, you know, this regulation? So I went back and tried that again and realized that, in fact, I could. And so what I suggested in my letter dated?
The most recent.
The most recent letter. Is that rather than, so to go ahead and merge the zones, however, in the, in the regulation as proposed, you do have certain restrictions on the uses to, for Boston Post Road only lots, and that specifically had to do with drive-throughs. So my suggestion was, rather than just have that Boston Post Road restriction for drive-through restaurants? restaurants, why not carry that through? And, because that really is the item of concern, which is to say, to not allow, to only allow those restaurant uses on properties rented, with rentage on Boston Post Road.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to say about this?
I mean, I think, I know there are others that want to speak to this one, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I mean, I think that it is, that does kind of solve some of the problems that we're talking about, because I think that it does make sense, I think, to merge the SB and SBE zones for the other parts of town, but I don't think that it, some of the uses that are listed as special permit uses make sense on West Avenue or on the other little bit of the SB zone, which you have in your little box up there. Now, I don't have any relationship to that area, but, you know, I just, I'm talking about it more globally and I think that this might be a way to sort of accomplish what you want to accomplish without the unintended consequences of having some of these more heavy commercial uses on West Avenue, which I don't really think can take the in and out traffic and nor is it appropriate, considering how residential that area is, to have the evening activities, et cetera.
Okay. So I'd love to kind of stick to the SB zone merger for comment. We heard a lot of comment at the last meeting. If you have new issues, we'd love to hear them, but we've already heard other concerns. So please raise your hand, I'll call you out. Mr. Mazz.
Bless you. Again.
Or put it right in front of you.
Good evening, my name is Robert Mazzola and I represent two groups of clients that I'm in, you're coming.
It says, yeah.
I don't have a phone here, so I'm getting over.
You want to, like, continue?
Mine's got something. Oh, look at that.
I'm just going to be more.
Back for a trick.
I sit down.
Try to be accommodating.
Now, he can't work it.
Too high tech.
Nah, that's too low.
Good job.
Okay, this coming in, this good? Okay, all right. I represent two groups of clients. One is directly related to the SB zone. The other is related to the MU zone regulations, which are part of the application that.
We're done here.
Which are, right, but you have the hearing open on changes to the rates and the MU rates are in that.
No, just.
Other application.
No, did we open up that one? No, we only opened up two. Sorry, sorry, we only opened up.
I'm not talking about that change.
Oh, you're talking about the rates.
It's the rate change and in the rate change application are some things that I want to, I want to talk about in the MU aspect, so I'll wait until you get to that.
Yeah, yeah, so just stick to the SB.
I'll stick to the SB. So for now, my clients are one sixty-eight West Avenue LLC, which I think you heard from the principals during the first session, they're here tonight, Aldo and Joseph Criscola, who are involved in that and they're, as you know, Heights Pizza. And I know they've talked about some of their personal feelings about this and how to address this from a little bit of a historical perspective and the zoning, generally a zoning approach. Okay, obviously consolidating these two zones makes a lot of sense. There's subtle distinctions between the two of them. I think they reflect, and many of these changes are correcting a trend for the last seventy-five years or so, where little zones were created to reflect existing development, little zones were created for specific developments that were proposed at the time, and some things were put in place because the town just didn't want certain things in town at all. And one of them is fast food. Okay, that goes back to the mid nineteen sixties. I don't want to mention anybody in particular, but some of you might remember places like Wetson's and Carroll's, the original Duchess, places like that.
You're really dating yourself.
I didn't want to say, I didn't want to mention anybody.
Go ahead.
All right. Okay. In their original format, you would drive in, Swanky France is another, drive into the parking lot, park your car, leave the wife and kids in the car, walk up to the window, get your stuff, walk back to the car, eat in the car, and sometimes the kids spill soda on the floor and drop french fries down in the seats. And on the way out, they would throw their garbage in the can, sometimes getting it in the can, sometimes missing. And I can understand why in nineteen sixty-five, the planning and zoning permission said, oh no, we don't want this in town. That carried forward to, through the seventies and into the eighties, but eventually this twelve hundred foot requirement came into place and I believe that that was the result of an evolution in the fast food industry. Places like McDonald's started to really take over and they started to build little mini restaurants with, you know, still had to drive in, could still eat in the car and walk, but if you wanted to just get out of the car and go sit down and have a meal, you could do that, you could, your order was filled very quickly and you didn't have to eat in the car.
Okay, so let's get to cheap dollars.
And in order to make that workable and to loosen things up a little bit so that you could have fast food like Duchess with the dining, they, the commission put in this twelve hundred foot requirement, so that you could, that ensured you had a big enough dining area to keep it from looking like Swanky France. And Duchess is a perfect example, because Duchess started over in Norwalk with a window and that was it. You don't have any of those anymore, not in areas like this. So that twelve hundred foot requirement is.
Louie Taco is kind of a driving.
Pardon?
Louie Taco exists, but.
Well, you had, you had the one over where exit thirteen was a few years ago, you'd drive in, pick up your order, still park it.
Still there.
Is that still out?
Louie Taco.
Oh, is that, okay. But that's not the typical park in the parking lot, throw your bag on the ground and, you know, I mean, that's pretty well controlled. In addition to that, since the nineteen sixties, zoning change, now you have special permits and we've taken advantage of that by requiring special permits for any food use, any food related use for consumption on or off the premises. You get to look at it carefully, control the exhaust, control the noise, you want to know what the hours of operation are, what your traffic situation is and everything. Shake Shack is probably the most recent successful example and in that application, twelve hundred feet became a question and we were able to make sure that the twelve hundred foot requirement was satisfied. But I don't think anybody would consider Shake Shack the kind of place that the original Wetson's and Carroll's were back in the sixties. So really, it's an obsolete requirement and ought to be eliminated, just simply because the, the industry has changed and it's not going to happen.
So you're arguing eliminate the size.
Eliminate the twelve hundred foot size, the dining room size requirement. Turning to pizzerias, which you have as, I believe in the post regulations, it's in as a quick.
Swiss.
Quick service to that restaurant, which is fine. That business now has takeout, it has home delivery or outside delivery, which eliminates some of the parking, quite a bit of the parking, because you have delivery vehicles making four deliveries on one run, which just eliminates the activity on site that you'd have if all those people came in and tried to sit down.
Well, Ficker is, it's not a long dining experience.
It's not a long dining experience, right, and there are ways to control, there are, we now have more sophisticated exhaust systems that you've seen in other applications, I'm going to keep going back to Shake Shack because we went through all of that. And in the, the earlier application, and I don't want to rehash, but I would note that there was a traffic study, I'll give you a copy of that just for the record, for reference, I'm not, I don't want to argue about whether, all, all I want to do is point out that the conclusion is it's workable in the SB zone at a site like one sixty-eight West Avenue without increasing or decreasing the quality of traffic, level of service at intersections and it concludes that there's sufficient parking between the onsite and the adjacent parking that was proposed. I guess I can just mention that. The alternative, and, and my comments, obviously the Criscolos care about the property that they now own and, but it applies all through the SB zone. You have businesses there, there's a community around it, it's nice to have a little takeout place and a pizza place in that area to serve that part of town, right? Rings End Road is a pretty big employer in town and their employees can walk down the street.
So can I ask you a question?
Was suitable for the zone.
By merging the zones, we don't eliminate the ability to do that, correct? As proposed?
Correct.
Or by leaving it as is, the only limitation that you have an issue with is twelve hundred feet. Okay.
But the reason this has become an issue is because your proposal, Glenn's proposal, I'm not sure how.
It's ours.
Collective.
It's our proposal.
It's collective.
It's the commission's application, it must be very.
Correct. It, the original, that proposal was to remove the twelve hundred foot requirement and I think that sparked some neighborhood opposition.
We're very aware.
Yes, I heard something good tonight. What I don't think you intended to do, and I don't think it would be appropriate, would be to remove a use from the SB zone, so.
And you heard my comments at the last one and that would not be proper if somebody wants to bring in a separate application to, to the commission to do that, that's possible.
A little bit of that just.
You definitely.
I don't, no, but I don't think that would be the right thing to do.
Not, not from a process standpoint, we never.
Well, not from a process standpoint, not from a planning and zoning standpoint.
It would not be fair to the property owner that purchased the property, which certainly is expected.
And that's, that's, again, you did make that, I think toward the end of the, either the presentation or the end of the year.
Okay.
And you do have other uses that probably might be equally objectionable to some people, like the things that are going on at Rings End, where you have open storage racks and that sort of, things that you can do in the SB zone as of right, would be an example. So, getting back to my original point and objective of all of this, go ahead with removing the twelve hundred square foot and don't remove restaurant uses or quick service or food.
Well, let's be clear, that's not part of the, the application.
I got that, but it's been suggested.
I don't want to confuse people.
I know it's been suggested.
I know it has and I've said, we've all agreed that's a proper process, so let's not confuse the situation. Either we leave the SB zones as they are or go forward as proposed.
One other point, in the, in Glenn's introductory memo, he has a recommendation to remove the word existing from the provisions that say you can have dwellings on the second floor of existing buildings. There's one place where it's still in.
Okay.
And that's section seven fifty-three I. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
I don't think that was intentional, I think that was just an oversight.
Sure.
All right.
How do you come back up?
You'll have to come back when you get to the.
Gentlemen, do you want to say anything? Sure, go ahead. I think, your representation made it pretty clear.
Yeah, yeah, just one, just one thing.
So, go ahead.
Thank you.
Because the audio comes through.
We got to talk into that, okay? Good evening, Aldo Criscola, and just for the record, I, I am the owner of Heights Pizza, but I'm also a resident, I live, I live in town and it's not just about, it's not about Heights Pizza, because in effect, Heights Pizza's moving, are moving to Boston Post Road, the old Planet Pizza spot. I have no intention of bringing Heights Pizza to this spot, so the neighbors won that battle. I just, and I don't know if it's, if it's proper, but I don't understand what, why does the commission feel, or what does the commission feel about the twelve hundred square foot requirement? What do you feel? Why is it there?
You'll hear that over our deliberations.
Okay.
So stay tuned when we deliberate again.
And the reason why I posed the question is because I know a little bit about the restaurant business in Darien, because I've been in town, running the business, restaurant business for thirty years, twenty-nine years in Heights. And the twelve hundred square foot requirement is actually, it, it's actually baffles and I'll tell you why I feel that way. If you look, if you take two pizza restaurants that are in town, that basically do the same thing, but one has dining and one doesn't. Heights Pizza doesn't have dining, Papa Joe's has dining. So if you look at the two, two businesses, which one is more intense? Which one does, right now, you can go to Heights Pizza right now, there's nobody in the parking lot, nobody. But if you drive to Papa Joe's, the parking lot, I don't know, it's probably fifty, sixty percent full. People go in the evening, it's more intense use in the evening, having a twelve hundred square foot dining, not less. So that's, you know, that's been confusing me since the very beginning and, you know, I just, I wanted to make that point.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And then one last point.
Well, let me, let me just comment, your proposal has that removed.
Okay.
Okay, so there is some intent of the proposal, remove that now, we all have to agree and I think it's a majority on that, but that's.
Just want to address one last thing, because on the last hearing, one of the neighbors, Neil Doine, brought up the idea of the ghost kitchen. You know, I guess he mentioned that term, meaning that some business, some restaurants now, you could just create a site online and not even have, not even have someplace you could walk into, just have a kitchen that delivers, that kind of thing. First, I took a little bit of offense to that, because in a town like Darien with twenty thousand people, that you, businesses don't, will never be, be like that. People, you're part of the community here in town and, you know, I, I, the community supports me, I also support the community, there's probably not an event in town with kids that Heights Pizza doesn't have, contribute to, and to suggest, you know, that ghost kitchen, those kind of operations, that was a little offensive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the SB zone?
Real quick.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'll be quick. I just wanted, can I submit these letters? I'll be quick, I, I put most of them. Joseph Criscola, owner of one sixty-eight West Avenue, I put most of the stuff I wanted to discuss in the letter, so I'll make this really quick. So I just wanted to show kind of what is across the street, because I think we're tending to forget, and I think the neighbors don't understand the code or, I mean, their attorney hasn't really looked at things. This is Rings End, right across the street.
Why don't you show us?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just want to show the neighbors. So that's Rings End. This is a steel company that is looking for a location right now, Stanford, they call Stanford Iron, they lost their lease and they're actually in discussion with us. So I think the neighbors might want to be considered their opposition, because they are, they are a prime example of what could happen in the zone and it's in the pictures I've submitted with the letter.
Would that be as of right?
As of right, that, you know, special permit.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry.
I would need to know more about the nature of the use, but the service business zone allows commercial sales and store, commercial sales and service generally requiring external storage or.
So, I mean, there would be a little bit, there would be a little bit interpretation in, in that, but in, in theory.
Exactly.
Okay, in theory, it could be as of right if it was determined that there's, there's sufficient outside storage and operations, right?
And sometimes karma happens everywhere, you know, you fought something and you shouldn't have, and I just want to mention that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the SB zone? If you, again, I'll remind folks that if something we don't, we don't hear again.
So, my name is Karen Doey, D O Y I P D. Thank you, Karen.
Can you speak louder, please?
Just, they have their own mic on that, that doesn't.
Yeah, that doesn't really.
So if you can just speak louder, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll do my best. I've written my comments and I dropped off a letter this morning, did you all get to read that?
We have not gotten that letter yet, but we will get it before deliberation, I can assure you, so you don't have to.
It was, it was very general and I just want to read some comments here. There seems to be some misunderstanding what our feelings are. So this is in relation to changing the amendment or the removing the text or the size. or the removing the text for the size requirements for restaurants. We feel that by removing the size restrictions from the existing regulations, that the intent for those regulations is also lost. The town plan clearly states that maintaining the residential character of the community is a key element to the plan. Restaurants that operate at night and on weekends belong in commercial, non-residential areas. The prime time for a restaurant coincides and conflicts with the gathering times for families, dinnertime, nighttimes, and weekends. People are drawn to Darien because of the quality of life that it offers. We return to our homes each night and weekend and look forward to enjoying time with our family without intrusion or business. These concerns were discussed at length 10 months ago when an application was submitted for this very purpose, to amend zoning regulations that remove all texts, including the size requirements for restaurants. Am I speaking loud enough? At the conclusion of that public hearing on June 5th, the meeting closed for partial deliberation. And although an official vote was not taken that night, each member of the P Planning and Zoning Commission participated in what was termed a sense of the meeting. Each commissioner expressed their thoughts as to whether or not size restrictions should be removed for restaurants in the SB zone, and how or if such changes align with the town plan. Four of the five commissioners that night presented what they felt the proposal was, and that was not in compliance with, nor did it advance the town plan. I would like to share just some of those comments that were expressed that evening.
Did you, can I just stop you there? Did you put those comments in your letter to the commission?
No. West Avenue is not the post road. I don't think this change supports or advances the town plan. I don't think it encourages coordination between property owners and developers. I don't think it limits business impact and intrusion on adjacent residential properties and streets. I don't think it encourages pedestrian access. I respect the law as it sits on the books. I have faith that there was intent at the time that it was put on the books. There is no compelling reason that the original regulation or intent is no longer appropriate or unfair. We worked really, really hard to consolidate business zones in certain areas within walking distance and not to jump West Avenue. We want commercial on the post road. This never came up in the plan, we never discussed this. I don't see a townwide reason to change it. There are two amazing developments going on right now that are in one location, are safe and in walking distance, and that are in alignment with the town plan. This proposal does not encourage coordination with many aspects of the town plan. And I see no reason to change the regulation as I feel it was put there for a reason, to put control on this. We agree with and commend the wisdom in which the commission considered the intent of the regulations and upheld the standards outlined in the town plan. They took in the whole picture. How is the business in this location going to impact the residential neighbors? Is this a good fit? Or would a different location be more appropriate and less intrusive to neighboring residents? How does it fit in the existing business character of the zone? Is there cooperation between the neighbors and the developers? And is this venture in compliance with the town plan enhancing the quality of life for residents, families, and neighbors while preserving Darien as a small, new England town? Eliminating size requirements on restaurants in the SB zone was not and is not in keeping with the town plan. Restaurants need control to prevent residential locations outside of the main commercial area from development that is not in harmony with family life, that intrudes on the privacy of neighbors, and is at odds with provisions set forth in the town plan. So I just want to make a comment here that this SB zone here is residential, and none of those businesses, it's all those...
It's surrounded by residential.
Yeah, all of those little properties there are hooked up to that zone. And that, the businesses that are there are all closed on weekends, they're all closed at night, that we have no, we have no business intrusion at all at that time. And to put something in that operates at those times is not appropriate. It doesn't fit the zone character.
Again, we're not talking about businesses being put in. We're talking about the combination.
The regulations being removed. The regulations being removed.
1400. So if I may summarize your statement, you would be against merging the two zones?
I have two statements. I would be against merging the two zones, because I think it's a, and that's addressed in my letter. It's, you've got two zones in there that are very different than the other three zones. The other three zones have I-95 access, they, you know, have businesses that are open nights and weekends, and they have, they have an environment for that kind of thing, where the other ones are sleepy businesses. And so the combining of the zone, I don't have a problem with combining the ones on the post road. But when you have this, you have to have provisions for something that's different than the other ones. It's not like the other ones.
You're asking us to change the whole existing zone at this point?
I don't know what I'm asking you to change the whole existing thing, but I think you need to consider that this is a very residential area, and it has residential hours. It supports family values. Nothing works, at night it's quiet, and weekends is quiet. You can talk about Rings End, and they're closed on Sundays, and they're closed at 5:00 o'clock.
Yeah, I just...
Right? So it really affects the quality of life for those families in that neighborhood. And you will see that the whole neighborhood has signed that letter.
Oh, you did get that letter. Email, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought it was just from you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It was hard to tell who it was from, because there were a bunch of signatures.
All over the place.
There were a lot, I didn't...
Oh, no, we have that in the record, thank you. And I did read it.
So, I just say that, that we would like to encourage the commission to reject and reevaluate this submitted proposal to eliminate the size requirement for restaurants.
Okay, so it's gonna say...
And consider adding provisions that protect that. The 1200 kind of protected that, if you will.
Okay.
So you're removing what I say, what I call is the intent.
Okay, so you heard me talking with this attack. It's either they stay the same way, in this application, either we reject the changes, or they're made as you have proposed. We're not gonna make any other changes.
So if you reject it, it keeps the 1200 square feet.
Perfect, thank you.
So that's fine.
Anybody else on the SB zone? Sir?
Hello, I'm Joe Valenzano. I live on 18 Herman Avenue, around the corner from West Avenue.
Could you just spell your last name, please?
D-A-L, V-A-L-Z-A-N-O. I was here when Heights applied for the zone change to relocate them. There were some good arguments made, and I really appreciated the board voting, you know, even though it wasn't a vote, saying they would not go for it. I think, I heard the arguments, the best argument came from Mr., you know, pretty much said, you know, West Avenue is not the post road, and it's not. Now, what concerns me is not the local business guy like Aldo coming in there. You know, he does live in town, and I'm sure he would want to represent himself well. You know, it's places like Dunkin' Donuts, Subway, who don't care. Guys own four or five franchises, they want them operated, you know, in and out, in and out. West Avenue, I don't think could really sustain that kind of business, people coming in and out of those little places. You're gonna have to issue people parking on West Avenue just to run in and out, they think they can get away with it. So it's just not an appropriate, you know, avenue for that sort of stuff. The other thing in history, I think the 1200 probably didn't come from fast food. My guess is it came probably to stop saloons. Like, they didn't want to see more Bennys and Ernie's in residential areas. Now, I don't think that could happen today, right? None of this, would that be allowed?
Somebody assembled 1400 square feet in that zone, that would be something we look at with special permit.
Bennys too, Bennys makes a reservation.
I'm not, you asked me a question, and you, we'd have to interpret the regs to see what the application is. But if it stays the same, somebody can't bring forth a restaurant that's 1400 square feet.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be Bennys.
Yeah, I'm not, obviously.
So, well, so I think back then...
I think you're, I think there's an assumption there, right?
Well, just like the assumption was fast food. I mean, he has no proof.
Yeah, we get the point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, that's just my point, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on the, in...
SB.
SB, too many letters. All right. Now, since Mr. Maslin wanted to talk about the, why don't you come up, Mr. Maslin, and talk about the clarifications of the MU zone, that we did some text changes, and proposing some text changes in the reg. So you addressed that.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Robert Maslin, attorney for the owners of three properties that abut Yoxbridge School. Francisco Rivera, Maria Carson, they're at 381 Mansfield. Michael and Lisa Elferi, at 303 Mansfield. And John and Martha Hendrickson at 577 Middlesex. Since we're only talking about the regs, I'll try to limit my comments at this point.
You must, so we don't get into...
So we don't get into...
Please.
The map, but some of the arguments apply in the legal. And I don't want, I don't want to pick up time if I don't need to at this point. The map part. We, my clients oppose converting the municipal use zone from a floating zone to an overlay zone. And we also have some clarifications in some of the texts that I'll point out in a couple of minutes. Converting the zone from floating to overlay is not really consistent with section 421. Section 421 is the background and purposes section. And it says, first of all, it provides a mechanism for treating municipal property on a case-by-case basis. And the commission looks at a specific plan and decides whether to land the floating zone on that site in order to do the project. Section 421 states, and I'll quote, "Not all municipal existing or proposed uses or properties will be appropriate for a municipal use zone." Converting this to an overlay zone is totally inconsistent with that concept, because in one stroke of pen, you're converting all of these parcels that could become MU zones under the floating zone concept in appropriate circumstances based on specific plans. It's worked in the past, and I don't think there's really any fear that it won't work in the future. A broad brush conversion to an overlay zone instantaneously reduces the setbacks in the more restrictive zones down to 25 feet. That's basically the starting point.
Could.
Do. That's in the area and bulk regulation. The proposed area and bulk regulation is very specific, 25 feet.
If included.
No, when it's, no, when you set it up as an overlay zone, it automatically becomes subject to those.
If utilized, I guess.
If you use it, yeah.
If you use it.
Yeah. Well...
And if a special permit...
You can't.
And a special permit, then it's a good...
Sure, but I know from years of doing zoning that if you have setback requirements and a special permit, the likelihood of denying somebody a setback under a special permit concept is very, I mean, that's very difficult to sustain in a people. Because there's a sort of an inherent or an implied determination by the commission that those setbacks are appropriate.
You're skipping a lot of the context within here as well, though. Where the commission feels appropriate. The determination through a special permit, you know, the standards in order to pass a special permit.
Right, but you're starting with a 25-foot setback. And then you have a further reduction down to eight feet in appropriate circumstances. But even that is somewhat troublesome, because it's not very specific in there. The standards are not objective.
Very subjective.
They're vague and very subjective.
That's what we get paid so well, to interpret the regs.
Well, that sometimes doesn't work very well. Sometimes it works quite nicely.
Worked pretty well for you, sir.
Well, I do it the right way.
In your opinion.
Sometimes you...
Sorry, I would start, but then keep going, Mr. Maslin.
So for the R2 zone, for example, I'm not getting into the specific map change aspect of this, but the front setback goes from 50 to 25. The side setback goes from 35 combined 70 to 25, or eight feet, which is a big, big reduction. And again, these are supposed to be special permit considerations, but what happens when a building committee comes in and says, well, we designed this beautiful plan, it could be a very nice plan, but eight feet from the boundary just shouldn't be that plan. And you don't get to see it until the plan's already developed.
I think that's the intent.
That's, but that's the issue.
The intent is to give the flexibility to, to the, let's say, the building committee to best utilize a property for a municipal use. That makes not only sense for the municipality, but again, it also, you skip the whole part about, you know, proper consideration for the neighborhood, plus the special permit standards that have to be set. And, okay?
But again, when you have specific...
You're taking the worst-case scenario for the neighbors in the language.
Right.
Okay, but not, and not also interpreting it, maybe there might be a best-case scenario that you wouldn't be able to do without the MU zone.
And that has to be fleshed out when there's a building committee that comes up with a plan and works through it. If you leave them with the starting point of the underlying zone with the possibility of applying the floating zone, there's an incentive to design the project so it's got the minimal or the least amount of impact on the neighborhood.
I would argue a low cost, yeah.
It still has a good plan.
Hundred percent.
All right?
We'd expect nothing less from a building committee, right?
I understand. You would expect...
Again, this is, these are private developers.
I got that, but sometimes plans get put in motion, you don't get to see them until they get to a certain point, and then try to unwind them. These are major projects.
Or the reciprocal, almost not get a high school built because this wasn't close, because of limitations.
Sure, I got that, but one question that's out there, and I didn't, I wasn't directly involved in the high school, I was back in the nineties. But, true, you didn't have the MU zone. But that was a very large project with a very large building. Could it have been developed or designed in a different way that could meet the variances that offended the neighbors? That I don't know.
I think if we had the MU zone in place, we could have much better development there.
Maybe, and...
Away, away from the problem.
But look at the plan when it's time. Don't broad brush, change everything to MU. Couple of points on just language. The area and bulk table for all of the residential zones has a provision in it that requires for rear lots an additional 50 feet added on to the front, ordinary front setback. That note doesn't appear in the area and bulk table that's being proposed for the MU zone. But, well, it doesn't appear in the table for the MU zone now. If you broad brush this, can you read that and say the 50 feet doesn't apply? Now, staff can have an opinion.
Well, I'd love to hear staff's opinion.
At the end of the day, it's gonna be up to a judge. If it's clear in the red, then...
A judge or a...
A judge. Because if you decide it doesn't apply, and somebody appeals, and the judge looks at it and says, well, it does apply, or vice versa.
A lot of assumptions that get to the judge point. What's your interpretation?
When Bob and I discussed this, this issue earlier this week, or late last week, and I consulted with Dave Keating, zoning officer, and he said, no, the rear lot extra 50 feet would still apply. Because that's section 339. And that's not section 406. That's a separate section of the regulations that would still be applicable...
It's still a rear lot.
Got it.
406 has a note that says, "See Section 339." But our MU table does not.
Okay, thanks.
The MU table does not, and I'm just suggesting, put it in so there's no question. That's all it...
Okay.
That's all I'm asking.
Got it.
There's another provision in here that says, when you're talking about additional height, it said it can be allowed if either of the following circumstances exist. One, all of the setbacks for the entire building are increased to at least two times the minimum requirements. Or, the commission find... Or, so set aside the two times. Or, the commission finds that the unique use and design of the building, combined with the location of the site and the development plan, will result in a project that will be appropriate for the community and the site-specific circumstances, and will not be detrimental to the reasonable use and values of adjacent properties. That takes away the doubling completely because it's "or."
Understood. I didn't write the red.
Change that to an "and" so that you have something concrete and specific to work with. Otherwise, you're going from... And by the way, which minimum? Is it the 25 minimum in the MU table, or is it the minimum in the underlying zone? May I suggest specifying the underlying zone?
So, can you... We're going to keep this open. So, can you summarize your proposals in a memo for our next meeting?
I'm happy to do that.
That'd be awesome.
I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Some of the rest of these comments I have have more to do with the history, and if I could just take a second or two on that. And I'll use some specific examples of developments over the years. Before the MU zone, the Old Town Hall Homes was developed, there was a specific zone setup for that project. It's the DVR zone. Worked well. The high school came along. There was no specific zone setup for that, and we all know what happened there. There was a variance granted, it was appealed, and the appeal got resolved, and I don't think I need to rehash the circumstances under which that was resolved. I'm sure the intent of the commission here is, let's not have that happen again, and I fully agree with that. The library project comes, and that's when the MU zone was created. The MU zone standards are set up for a library that's surrounded by non-residential uses and zones. The police station was next. That's surrounded by the DOR...
Wait, wait, I got it. The intent specifically talks about public elementary schools, public housing, so it goes beyond that.
Goes beyond that.
Yeah.
I'm saying, but the MU zone's in there beginning.
That was the catalyst of it, but...
Correct.
The background purposes include all municipal...
Understood. But at the time it was created and started to be implemented, it was a floating zone.
Understood.
It wasn't a zone that just automatically applied to every municipal property in town. And so, all I'm saying is that originally, it was for a project that was not surrounded by residential properties or residential zones, and that's the first two. Police station was the other. Town Hall Homes comes along, and there was a discussion whether that type of housing was a municipal use, and eventually the commission agreed it was. Even then, now it's an MU zone instead of using the DVR zone, but that's okay. The commission went through the process, and it worked.
We actually amended it, too.
Yeah, and it worked, so that... Sure, because it landed the MU zone on the police station, library, and Old Town Hall Homes.
You increased building coverage, too, at that point, right?
Coverage is now 25 percent.
For that property.
Was it just for that property, or why?
The MU zone properties.
Yeah.
And it's been working as a floating zone where you look at specific plans before you implement the zone and land it on a particular site. That's what makes sense. You have some municipal properties that are larger than others. There's one I know that's just under 10 acres, and there's plenty of room to build with the underlying regulations. There may be an issue on height because of gymnasium requirements, but that's what the MU zone is for. But at least leave an incentive in place to comply with the underlying things like setbacks and such, so that the neighborhood is protected and the school gets built, and it's adequate, and it's top-notch, state-of-the-art. That's what everybody wants, but leave an incentive in place so that it's just not a cart launch, you can get out in eight feet. I know what you're saying about special permit, but you know, you start mixing numbers for setbacks and special permit requirements, sometimes courts don't look at it the same way that you intend it, and that's the reality of dealing with zone issues. So, I'll submit something that will have the specific tweaks, if you will, to the regs. But again, my primary objective, I find its primary objective is do this on a case-by-case basis rather than making it an overlay zone.
Great. Okay, so I have a process question. We're probably going to have to leave this item open to also talking about the intents and purposes of the MU zone. So, we're going to, even though most of this was discussed regarding the business zones...
And there's still some people here to talk about the other business and aspects, but certainly we can try to kind of get...
Get the business zones out of the way, if I...
As much as possible.
Okay, so, we're going to... I'm sorry.
If I could just make one other point, and I know, I don't want to rehash the whole thing when it comes time to talk about the map amendment. I think my comments that you just heard apply equally to the map amendment. Because it's, again, if you're going to make it a... Keep it a floating zone, the map amendment doesn't happen.
Okay.
It is really...
Yeah, and I'm sorry. So, we're just going to quickly go back to the business zones. Anybody else want to talk about the business zones that we've discussed? Mr. Flaherty, sorry about that. And I'll just talk about this. And we'll go back to the MU zone, sort of, because...
Good evening. My name is Craig Flaherty. I am a principal and senior engineer with Residence and May. In interest of full disclosure, I did have heights pizza tonight. When I met my wife for the first time, we were at Benny's, so, okay. I have no problem with that, I'm established. We're getting better than Chase Benny. I gave you a letter, there's six sentences, I'm going to read the six sentences. I'm here writing on behalf of the owners of Three Parklands Drive, which property is in the upgraded and consolidated designed office zone. In general, the owners support the amendments, including the addition of uses like medical and dental clinics that expand their available lease options. However, the commercial office leasing market is still struggling, especially for legacy suburban campuses such as this. The owners continue to evaluate options that would return the building to full occupancy and thereby most effectively contribute to the local economy and the town's tax base. As such, they hope the commission will continue to be flexible with use suggestions for properties like this, so they remain relevant in the future. Should the right opportunity arise, retaining a hotel use in the regulations could be helpful, as would considering residential options with certain restrictions as to number, size, age, portfolio, et cetera. Basically, we wanted to make sure we took advantage of the comment period to put these comments on the record and not allow silence in the face of the discussion to be used against the purpose.
So, bottom line, you want to see hotels remain?
I watched your... I watched your discussion from last time, and I understand the struggle of creating a definition without understanding a site that it might work on. But at least make the record clear, it would be good, I think, if there was a definition in the regs, but at least make the record clear that it's not necessarily because you don't think there is the right in or that breakfast or boutique hotel that could find a spot in Darien, but that it was just too hard to do it in a vacuum without understanding where it might land.
Got it.
So, I think we just want the record clear, so like, if the legislative intent is out there, and that's really the purpose of our comments.
That's helpful. Thank you. Anybody else from the business zones? Okay, no other business zone comments?
Last thing was, we did talk about adult daycare as one of the options, but you know, I didn't see it written yet.
That was definitely the intent of the commission, I guess. I didn't mention it on the floor today.
Okay.
Great idea. Jeremy, you...
I don't recall, I'd have to look it up.
Okay, yeah, I have it here, so it's not in there yet.
All right, so can we ensure that adult daycare gets in there? Because I know we did discuss it during...
That'd be a separate proposal.
As a use under 793.
Yeah. We discussed the intent of putting it in, so we might have missed it.
I'll consult with Glenn.
Okay. Because I remember vividly...
So, if there's a process issue now with adding it, if you think that's true, then perhaps you could discuss whether or not a use such as that would be considered an educational, philanthropic, cultural, or recreational use serving the community need. That might fit there, so you could make that statement.
We'll figure that out, okay? We could put the intent lets to include that, so if we've missed it, we'll figure out a way to fix it. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back to MU, and First Select and Stevens here, ex-official member. Would you like to say anything?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Stevenson, S-T-E-V-E-N-S-O-N, Darien's first selectman. Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I want to thank you very much for the hard work that you're doing on reviewing all of these regulations. I also want to thank our staff and Glenn Chalder for his years of dedication to the effort of the town plan and now looking at our regulations. The town has benefited from the overlay of an MU zone and the flexibility it's offered for the successful completion of the Darien Library, the Darien Police Department, and currently the redevelopment of Old Town Hall Homes. Among other benefits, the application of the MU zone to all properties serving a municipal purpose will allow for a consistent application of zoning regulations throughout town and provide some flexibility for heightened setbacks for property redevelopment. A critical attribute to the proposed MU zone extension is the requirement that all applications become special permit applications, requiring a substantially greater level of public engagement in the process and a greater burden for making certain findings on the part of the commission. This process will ensure that public and neighbor interests are preserved. Section 425D makes clear that all uses shall be subject to special permit approval, and the commission must determine that there will be no unreasonable detrimental impact on adjacent properties in order to approve the application of the MU zone. The use of the MU zone has proven to be useful in facilitating better outcomes by providing flexibility for several town facilities and may do so for future projects where property characteristics and current zoning impede optimal outcomes. With the commitment to carefully consider the impacts to surrounding properties through a special permit process, I support the extension of the MU zone to the 13 facilities stated in your application. Respectfully submitted, Jamie Stevenson.
Thank you. And just for the record, the Darien Board of Education also sent a letter that will... Jeremy, we'll put Ms. Stevenson's letter on the website and also the Board of Education's letter on the website, but in basically in support of the application, and we'll make sure that gets up in the next layer, so... All right, so, you know what? We should probably open the map. The next agenda item, because we can't close this one because we're talking about MU zone.
Did you want to continue the business regulation changes? Give the folks here...
Oh.
...a date, a date it would be?
Okay, why don't we do that?
Looking at Tuesday, May 14th, at 8:00 PM in 206 Town Hall.
Okay, I'm hopeful that the business zone discussion is, most of it's behind us, but we... This is for proper process, we have to keep it open, so... So, Kevin, could you open that last agenda item and...
I did jump, but I'll do it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I didn't realize the map.
Amendments to zoning maps, here's EM number 3-2019, but forth by the Darien planning commission. Just to be clear, that's number seven on our public project.
I don't think you've read this before.
Oh, you want me to read the whole thing?
Yeah, yeah, you have to read that.
I'm sorry. Okay, I misunderstood. So, further proposal to amend the Darien's own map to include certain municipally-owned properties and/or properties that fulfill a municipal function in the municipal use MU overlay zone, as provided for in Section 420 of the Darien Zone Agreement. These properties include Darien Town Hall and Two Orange Road, Darien Department of Public Works Garage, 2628 Road, Darien Heights Fire Department at 209 Road Avenue, Darien Fire Department of 1873 Boston Post Road, the Darien Fire Department of 848 Boston Post Road, and the properties owned by the town and controlled by the Board of Education is follows. Darien High School at 884 St. Louis Road, 206 School at 7 Old Farm Road, Henley Elementary School at 10 Year Water, Holmes Elementary at 18 Hoyt, Royal Elementary School at 133 Mansfield, Yox Ridge Elementary School at 395 Mansfield, and the Board of Education Office Building at 35 Leroy. The proposed zoning map amendments are on file and available to Town Clerk's Office and the Planning and Zoning Office for inspection and online at darienct.gov/pcc.
All right. Glenn, did you have any prepared remarks for that, or do you have any slides or anything on the properties involved in the MU zone? You want to get up?
I'll give it a shot.
Thank you. Stand.
Good evening, everyone. Jeremy Ginsburg, Planning and Zoning Director. I know I've spoken to some of you as you receive letters from our office talking about a little bit about the MU zone. You've heard a little more about it tonight. Here to give you a little background, give you a few more details, feel free to come on up. This will guide us along. As was referenced earlier, the Planning and Zoning Commission worked on the town plan of conservation development, adopted that in 2016, worked with Mr. Chalder on that plan, and as a result of that, there were a number of recommendations made relative to business zoning changes, and you've heard a lot about them tonight, and as part of that, this MU zone, this overlay zone, was discussed, and the commission's been discussing it on and off for about a year now. Commission first worked on site regulations, then the business regulations, where we're working on wrapping that up, but we're here tonight to talk about the municipal use overlay zone. So, as mentioned earlier, it was established as part of the proposal for the new Darien Library in 2006. That proposal was put forth by the library, gave the library the ability to have a full third story. You've all been there, you've driven past it. Right now, if you will, many schools are in residential zones, which allows a 30-foot height maximum, and the library exceeded that in their design, and you can see what was constructed there, which advantage of that extra height. As described earlier, the police station developed using the municipal use zone as well. It gave them a little flexibility relative, I think it was, to the rear yard setback, which, as Mr. Maslin noted earlier, is adjacent to the Arnold Circle Office Park. And more recently, in 2016, when Old Town Hall Homes, a corner of Boston Post Road and Academy Street, was approved, it gave a little flexibility, again, for a full third story. So, as you see that project coming along, that will be a project that has three full stories of housing.
Are you going to talk specifically to that development at all, how we were able to shift away from...
Yeah, we'll talk a little bit about the fact that, in the case of Old Town Hall Homes, that building is a little more centered on the property, and as I've mentioned to some of you in my individual meetings, the town is looking to apply this to 13 properties, which would be the seven schools, the five elementary schools, Middlesex Middle School, the high school, this building, which is Town Hall, the Public Works Garage on Ledge Road, the Board of Education facility, which is the old Darien Library, and the three fire stations. Many of these properties, like this building, are in a residential zone, and residential zones usually have houses, two and a half stories, you can finish half an attic and half a basement, and as I mentioned to the Board of Education when I presented this to them a few days ago, most houses in Darien don't have a need for an auditorium or a gym, but some high schools, the middle schools and elementary schools do that. So, it's a different type of development that's going on, and it... So it's a different type of development that's going on, and a different type of municipality has needs for a town hall and a police station and a fire station. This gives them a little more flexibility on that. So as was mentioned earlier, schools, we'll talk a little bit about schools. Schools in residential zones are permitted what's called as of right. They're permitted principal uses. The standard of review for the Planning and Zoning Commission is whether the proposal meets the zoning regulations. So in recent years, the most recent proposal by the schools were for the cafeteria expansion at Darien High School. That just needed a simple site plan review. That cafeteria didn't change the height of the structure. It met all the setbacks. It was a simple site plan review that was approved, reviewed and approved by the commission, I think at the same night without a public hearing. Didn't need a public hearing, there was no argument for it. So that's been going on for the schools for years in terms of simple routine portables or generators or those types of things that meet the setbacks, simple site plan review by the commission. Most recently, you may recall, and there was reference earlier, when the high school was constructed and the middle school was expanded a few years ago, those were both three-story additions. They exceeded the building height. They needed variances from the zoning Board of Appeals. The state statutes are very clear, zoning board appeals, to get a variance, you need to get four out of five votes, and the courts have said variances shall be sparingly granted. That's the highest burden that someone can face of getting a variance from the zoning board of appeals. They are designed to be difficult to obtain. So in the case of the high school, a variance was granted, it was appealed, and the town eventually settled the appeal. So that is for any municipal property now that would exceed either height or setbacks or exceed coverage. If the municipal zone is not in place, then a variance would be needed. There would be a hearing before the zoning board of appeals because the statutes require a public hearing, and the town would need to get four out of five affirmative votes to grant the variances required.
Could you add any color to Tokeneek School, those part of you?
The Tokeneek School, when it was designed, met, and that was the most recent new school constructed in town, that met all the setbacks, height and coverage. It's a rather large property. So it's, it's a corner lot, corner of Old Farm and Tokeneek Road. It's at least forty feet away from both of those, and it just needed a site plan approval from the commission and a referral report for substantial improvement to town property.
One of the, one of the characteristics, though, it's a very flat piece of property. So remember, when you measure height, it's average grade around this structure.
Right, that's where the high school had an issue is because the school was so big horizontally and the land sloped, that the average grade really worked against it. And I remember working and talking to the zoning board of appeals on the height calculations that as schools get bigger, or like Middlesex, middle schools also on a slope, that the calculated height easily exceeds thirty feet. Again, they're working with height restrictions that are mostly designed for houses. So it's a different type of development. So we talked earlier tonight about the special permit standards and the MU zone, as was acknowledged earlier, would change the standards from a simple site plan review to a special permit review with very specific findings that would need to be made by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we talked about the thirteen properties that are being proposed. That is not all of the town properties. There are a number of other properties that are not part of this.
Mostly parks.
Right, the Diller property, for example, Highland Farm is not part of this. The municipal parking lots are not part of this. So there's a number of properties that are not included, which are part of this. Because I don't think the town envisions buildings there. But let's just focus on the thirteen. And we've talked a lot about these facts earlier tonight. Next. So we talked about the fact that it's an overlay zone. It really gives the town a choice on how they wish to develop the property, using the current setbacks for the zone, the structure is in, whether it's a school, a town hall, a fire department, whatever it might be. The town can develop using what's called the underlying zoning that it's in now or apply to use this municipal use overlay zone. And again, the standard would be a special permit. So we talked about the various options, the findings, and let's say the town wanted to exceed even the MU zone, which is possible, they would need a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Whether that would exceed in terms of setbacks, height or coverage, it is possible. The town might still need to go to the zoning board of appeals to meet that higher grade. Yeah, and speaking generally. So we've, we've talked about the high school, we've talked about the middle school. Next slide.
Wait, and just talk about how the courts, the more recent court decisions have changed the standard of granting variances.
Right, as, in the past few years, the courts have made obtaining a valid zoning board of appeals variance even harder. And that law applies to every community in Connecticut, that not only should variances be granted sparingly, but the courts have really, really cranked on making clear that many communities were granting too many variances. And the courts have reiterated that in recent years, saying the standard should be difficult based on hardship inherent in the land and unique circumstances.
Jeremy, can I?
Sure.
I apologize for the interruption, but I just want to make sure I understand clearly how this works. Let's say homeschool is a residential area, and the town wants to redevelop homeschool. Can't we simply say that, okay, homeschool is now a, included in the municipal use overlay, is now a municipal use overlay zone? And I mean, we've been, it seems to me that with the library and the Town Hall Homes, we've sort of been cherry picking these projects as they come up.
Or, or addressing them as they come up versus equally.
Right, that's what Mr. Maslin has said earlier. His recommendation to the commission was, why don't you address them as they come up? Because you might not even need it, so why apply it if you don't need it? And what the commission's saying is, we're looking to just these thirteen properties and to give the town that option upfront rather, and so that was Mr. Maslin's argument, is if you think you need it, you could apply it at the time, like the library and the police station and Old Town Hall Home, rather than before that time.
It's a floating zone today.
I think Glenn and I have talked about, and that's why it was included in that regulation about overlay zone or, or floating zone. We talked a little bit about, about that and what, we talked a little bit more on the fourteenth about, about that. Just wanted to talk, again, this is the regulations we discussed earlier in section four oh six of the regulations. These are the regulations for residential zones in town. In terms of building height, two and a half stories, thirty feet, twenty percent building coverage maximum in all the residential zones in town. Again, as was mentioned earlier, next slide, the MU zone reiterates the two and a half stories, thirty feet. As was mentioned earlier, there is a provision which allows the town to go higher if it's, the new building meets extra setbacks or the commission makes certain findings. Similarly, we talked on setbacks, which could be reduced depending on the situation. I don't really have anything else. I think that pretty much covers in terms of the basics of the MU zone, the properties, the flexibility it gives the commission, the fact that the town may or may not use, take advantage of these things depending on the situation. So I'll.
So again, I want to apologize for the disjointed nature, going kind of Jeremy after Bob. It's just the nature of how we wrote up the agenda. But I want to reiterate, this, this thought has been going on for about two years as a long-term planning option for the town. And I think we, as we discussed it in initial discussions and among staff and consultants, it's more equal application of a zoning tool, if you will, across all properties. So we're not as, I mean, Jimmy used the term cherry picking. I'm not sure we were cherry picking, but, you know, so that there's equal application amongst all the schools and municipal properties, or could be. One of the things I find most alarming is it gives tremendous flexibility to unique properties. And I'm not going to call out certain properties, but to move the structure away from actually the residential neighborhoods. And I will use Old Town Hall Homes. We took the density of the project away from the neighborhood and closer to basically Post Road. And that was as a direct request of the neighbors. It was not designed like that initially. So I view this as if, if I was a property owner, neighboring municipality, as a, actually an asset that could be utilized to help keep the density. You know, the alternative is if it's not even applied, you'd have a sprawling campus in some cases. Some cases, schools would have to be closed as they're being reconstructed. And so, you know, to Mr. Maslin's question, and it's a good one, it's one that we've thought long and hard about, is whether or not we do it one at a time in future commissions. Maybe it's a secret that I'm not going to be around in about six months or less. But future commissions, you know, you want to saddle in with unequal application of a zoning tool, which again, I find very valuable to both neighboring property owners as well as the town. So that's kind of the inception. I don't know if any of you guys want to add anything to that? But that's where this has come from.
So.
Go ahead.
We're doing, taking care of, taking a step out of the process. Right, for Old Town Homes, they take it first.
Yep.
Yeah, but we're also, I think, to change point into your point, we're adding a piece, which is the special permit, right? So we're actually making more, more review by this commission than you necessarily would, right?
Yeah, and, and so, just, just because we are going to continue this, you know, we'll take some comments, too, so you don't have to come back if you don't wish to. But the standards of review are in sections for special permits, which are section one thousand, and they're very specific standards that the commission must meet. So I know a previous speaker kind of scoffed at that, but, you know, we're elected officials, we have to take those seriously. Every, every decision is up for review by the courts, as Mr. Maslin pointed out. So, you know, it would be a very diligent process of reviewing any of these municipal projects that, that reach the level of the use of municipal use zone. And of course, the building committees are made up of your, your neighbors and your peers. So I guess we'll, anybody else have a comment? So I guess we will open up the public comment and anybody like to speak to this topic here?
My name is Roy McDonald, M.C.E.O.N.A.L.D. I live at thirty-four Dickinson Road, next to the open firehouse.
Did you send, I'm sorry, you sent the letter, did you send the letter? Yes.
No, Tripp Freeman did.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thanks.
The multiple use overlay makes sense in terms of municipal buildings. However, the new open fire department is less than one acre and is surrounded by three residential homes. And what I want to address specifically is some of the issues that I had with very specific components of the zoning rigs as reflect setbacks, landscaping buffer. Because I've only been here a couple of times, once in two thousand and six when the fire department wanted to go up an additional floor, and I approved that, I gave them my blessing. They wanted to build a garage in two thousand and fourteen, and they needed a variance, and they wanted to eat into the setback between their and my property, which has a hedge, which is important to buffer, because I can basically see all the lights here, everything. And what came out in that hearing was that the fire department had actually cut back on their side of the parking lot, right up to the tree line, and actually denuded the trees, the hedge that was the buffer zone. So my concern is, if you grant this to that property, that for sections in four twenty for special controls, reasonable appropriate parking side requirements, excepts may be adjusted or eliminated, reasonable appropriate landscaping that may be adjusted or eliminated. The buffer twenty-five foot buffer zone, which may be adjusted or basically eliminated completely. So that would have a definite impact on the value of my home and my pleasure in living there. And to the commission's credit, when I appeared before here during that variance hearing, Chairman DeLuca said, we understand the concerns of the neighbor, meet with the firemen, figure this out yourselves, which we did, and we compromised. And one of those compromises was that they needed to restore that buffer zone and plant trees. And I actually reached out to Mr. Ginsburg via email to discuss certain components of, of where that needed to be. We reached an agreement, but it took three years to get that fixed. So in terms of compliance and addressing these very specific issues, I know that, and you're talking about Mr. Maslin before, that this is a case by case basis, that it's up to the committee to make those, those decisions. But I just want to press upon you that as a neighbor with a very small, very unique property, that basically these things can be eliminated, this would have a detrimental effect, and it has been a fight, but I'm willing to work with them. But to grant just a, a complete access to be able to eliminate these requirements is very scary.
So that's a good point. If the MU is applied, let's use the example of the open fire department. If it was applied there, they would have to come forth.
With the proposal.
With a proposal to change the site.
Right, in that case, they went to the zoning board of appeals for a variance to construct that garage, I think it was about five years ago, three to five years ago, somewhere.
That was in two thousand and fourteen.
You might have been on the ZDA.
So.
So in that case, they would need, depending on what they do, potentially a special permit to construct. It really depends on what they.
I mean, it doesn't give them carte blanche to eliminate screening, if you will.
That's correct.
They would have to come back with a proposal that would be.
Right, but that is the concern, that the language itself states that in section four twenty, four twenty-five A, B, C, D, and the nine oh six buffer zone D, that these can be eliminated.
They could, but.
There's always a but, but if I open that up, I don't have a but on the other side.
Right. It's, it's, similarly, if they went to the zoning board of appeals and asked for the buffer to be eliminated, they can make that request to the ZDA, who could say no, yes or no? So, yeah, I agree with you, I agree with you that they can make the request.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't think it's.
I mean, I guess you have to have faith in the people that you elect to this position that would have concerns over, you know.
But no one forced compliance on it. I had to fight for three years to get.
All right, that's unfortunately not our role.
It's not going to be, but it's not going to be your rule six month ago either.
No, it's not our role as a commission.
Well, there's, if you make it a, if you have something.
Compliance, you said compliance.
The enforcement of something that's quite.
That is not our role. That is zoning important.
That was a different board.
This was an answer to your saying I have to have faith.
Well, yeah, yeah, in any leadership position, that people are making subjective decisions.
And what I'm just giving you is a point by point case where I did give faith, but it took three years to get it rectified.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Michalski.
Paul Michalski, M.I.C.H.A.L.S.K.I., three seventy-one Middlesex Road. I, I had a concern about this, this overlay, but I really kind of couldn't put a finger on it until Mr. Maslin's insightful description of overlay versus floating, because I didn't understand that. And what bothered me was the idea of just assweeping applying these zones now when you don't actually have a case. Because I, I get, what I've heard is that Oxbridge is kind of a depressing thing to make sure you can deal with Oxbridge, and that I get. And it seems like this floating zone thing has been working. Kind of, it's, it's worked for the library, it's worked in these other places, the high school variance is kind of a non sequitur because of the municipal zone thing apparently didn't exist then. So the whole variance thing isn't really even an argument. It's just a question of, do we look at it case by case, or do we just sweepingly apply these things across? And to me, when something says we give the town more flexibility, the flip side of that is, that has to come at the expense of protection to some extent of property owners in the area. And we're now moving into, because if, you know, if they didn't, the flexibility. And we're now moving into, because if, you know, if they didn't, the flexibility means they don't have to jump over through some hoop they might have had to jump through before.
No, they actually have to jump through another hoop with a special permit.
Well, and I guess, I, I have a question about that, because as I'm looking at the redlining, the special permit was in there already. What?
No, the schools are as of right, so for example, the cafeteria addition, remember I spoke about that?
Yeah.
The cafeteria did not need a special permit. That was just a simple site plan, which did not require a public hearing, it did not require the special permit review, it was just a simple, did the cafeteria meet the regulations? So if they were to use the MU zone on something at the high school, whatever it would be, making it, then it would require a special permit review, wouldn't require variance anymore.
Right.
Unless they went way beyond the MU zone, so.
But they wouldn't, presumably they wouldn't use it, they'd use the other Y example, and if they didn't need the benefit of the MU zone.
Of course, they would.
In which case, they wouldn't need a special permit.
Right, and that applies to whether it's the fire departments, public works garage, this building, you wouldn't put yourself through more of a hoop, you would just do it.
So the cafeteria wouldn't have needed to get this, even on this, it wouldn't need the special permit.
That's correct, right.
Tokenique didn't need any sort of variance.
Or special permit.
Or permit, because of, you know, the property was pristine for development of that school, right? But you, you said something about like Ox Ridge, that is not the catalyst. We've been talking about this for two years, well before the building committee was put together, and even plans for replacing that school were in motion. So this stems back from, actually, when we were discussing lights, I brought it up, because I thought it might be a tool for that. We actually wrote the regulation where you would never need the MU zone to do that, it's more of a property limitation, so, property size limitation. So again, you know, from our standpoint, doing one by one by one, is that equal fairness to any, all property owners in town? Is it, is it, is it the right, do we, I guess we're kind of trying to figure out is, does it make it easier for the town, but again, the flexibility on the neighbors, you said comes at cost, I believe it came at a massive benefit to the neighbors of Old Town Hall Homes. There was no, there was actually, so it was applied. So your, your question on one, doing one by one versus broad application is something we're clearly going to be discussing as a commission. You know, I think in our early discussions, it came down to, you know, Jimmy used the word cherry picking, a property by property by property. I am more, I, I infringe, in my belief, infringes a little on spot zoning, I know a court wouldn't find that, but it's a concern I have by just picking off property here, property here. I like the broad application.
Yeah, and I, and I wouldn't use cherry picking, I think it's actually just kind of intelligently looking when you have a specific situation in front of you and deciding it makes, it makes sense. And, and now, you, you brought up the lighting, I mean, we're talking about setbacks and building heights, but in theory, could the commission add a provision into the, to the overlay zone that dealt with lighting of properties that are in municipal.
I don't think, I don't think you'd need, are you talking about field lights?
Yeah, I mean, could, but.
I don't think you'd need it, your regulation here already says, section, where are we? Sorry, I put it there.
Four oh five B.
Four oh five B. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it basically, the, the standard for allowing lighting is already there, town owned properties greater than six acres. So why would you need to use the MU zone for lighting?
No, but, but could, I mean, rather than just focus on this, you could add additional flexibility into this MU zone, which then automatically applies to all of these properties if it's applied across the board. And we don't know that that's even appropriate. I mean.
Like, are you using, I'm missing here, are you using field lights as an example?
I'm using, I mean, lighting is an example of something, for example, that could be added in, I mean, there's something in here that says.
But why would we duplicate?
You know, you have special lighting for parking areas that you wouldn't have normally, right?
Yeah, I guess, I guess a future commission can change the regs at its, at its wishes.
Right, and so what it changes is, it then automatically applies to all of these schools. If it were to change the municipal use zone to be more flexible on something like lighting, it then automatically is, is available to every school without the commission having to say, "Well, it doesn't make sense here, or it does make sense there," and so that's why I would.
No, I think they're, section four oh five B deals specifically with lighting, and has a whole bunch of specific standards that deal with lighting.
Right.
That would have to be currently meant for, that applies to all the schools now.
Any, any municipal property, six, six acres.
Residential zone, that, that would apply.
Somebody can apply for a special permit for permanent lighting, it's in the regs now.
No, I understand, I understand that, but my point is, beyond lighting, you, by making it an additional flexibility in this municipal use zone, if you've applied it to all the schools, that automatically now applies it everywhere, without people having had a chance to really think about that situation.
Well, we'd have to have a public hearing just like this, talk about the change of the regs.
So I, I guess I just would say, I've heard nothing tonight that suggests that the current floating zone doesn't work. And it seems now that you're talking about properties that really are surrounded by residential homes as opposed to some of the ones where it's been used before, that maybe the, the better part valor is, let's keep what's working and not just create this flexibility in what are much more densely residential.
Sure, thank you. Sure.
So, we are.
I'm sorry, if you could just.
Sorry, yes, sir.
Tell us who you are.
So we are Eva and Francisco Ribero, and we live in three eighty-one Mansfield. So.
Could you spell your last name for me, please?
R I V S Victor E R O.
Thank you.
Francisco.
Thank you.
San Francisco. So, we're back to back with Ox Ridge Elementary. So you have the Fieris in three eighty-three.
Yep.
And then the next house is ours.
Yep.
So behind us is the baseball fields of Ox Ridge Elementary. The playground first, and then the fields. So I buy a house ten years ago. What I see is the fields, the woods, and first they tell me that they are going to remodel Ox Ridge Elementary. Great. It is an L shape, right? But it's not a perfect L shape.
The problem.
It's deeper, the, the property of Ox Ridge Elementary is, is deeper where it is, and it is smaller on this side, which is what is right next to us. So first they say they are going to remodel, then I hear that the idea is not a formal line, but the idea, this is what is commented among the community in the school, is that they are going to move, when they redo it, to this part, to the fields, to the baseball fields, and leave as fields where is the construction today. The problem is that, you see, I mean, from, from top down, it's evident that the, the piece of land where they are thinking of moving the school is much smaller. So they're trying to squeeze in the school building there, right? At the same time, coincidentally, I hear now that they go with this overlay where they give the town the possibility or the capacity to decide on, on the, on the setbacks.
Let me just correct something.
Yeah.
The building committee had nothing to do with this application. This was well in the works, well before it was even considered to be.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't want to place blame on another commission, okay? This is, this is coming from this commission.
Sure.
Okay.
So for us, the, the only point is, okay, so if the setback, I mean, this is an R two residential area. So to begin with, you guys are talking of thirteen properties, but of the thirteen, I believe this is the only one in R two.
It's not?
High school, it's. High school, okay. Look, it's only, I mean, two of the thirteen. So we will be among the most affected, if something. Because what, what, what happens here is, if I have a fifty feet setback on the, on the rear part, but because this is a back property, right, it, it extends to one hundred, right?
Yes.
Mr. Ginsburg said that.
Yeah.
From one hundred, if somebody decided, can narrow down to eight, what are we talking here? This is America, the country of the laws.
So I think.
Right? I mean, the rule of law, we love this country for that. That's why I bought my property there.
So, so I would take it a different way, and say, if we offer that certain property, and again, I haven't seen plans, this is just conceptually talking with Mr. Ginsburg, and actually a member of the building committee, who is also a neighbor, and the thought process is, by allowing a little extra height, you can actually move the structure away from your property more versus a sprawling structure. Now, I don't want to get into the discussion of how you, you, you conduct school activities while you're doing construction, but I'm sure that's going to be one of the requests of the building committee and the Board of Education, that you don't have to shut down a school during construction. Again, this is all hypothetical, it hasn't been discussed, I, I've only had one discussion with a, one member of the building committee who also happened to be a neighbor, okay? So we, I think, especially that lot, you get flexibility that you would welcome as a neighbor, especially your property, because you can push it back a little further along a non, a property line that does not border houses, it borders what a, open space, open space area.
On, on the height, on the, on the depth, on the distance.
You can move it again closer to the open space area, the, you can, the open space area is wood, right? So you could put a building eight feet from the woods, which you would not be able to do without this, this, this zoning tool, if you will. Let's not throw it down, just.
And then my only, my only other point, I mean.
I'm just, it's just a change.
My only other point, when I hear the argument of moving, I mean, the, the main building, is, why do we have to do something more complicated that affects the neighbors?
It's not.
When the line is much bigger on that side.
I, that, that's not my decision, that's not our decision.
Yeah, okay.
There's no proposal, there's nothing coming forth.
Okay.
Trying to use common sense in terms of envisioning this property and where things might happen, but they haven't, you don't even have any.
Survey's not.
Survey's done, yeah.
Okay.
We are, that, that is so far down the realm of.
Okay, so my only point, I mean.
Yeah. Oh, you made great points.
And, and I respect, I mean, the time of everybody, but my only point then would be before this committee is, if we go to the MU, we're comparing apples to birds. In this back of thirteen properties, I mean, we are, together with the high school, the only R two, so for us, the change from the R to the MU is tremendous. So it's not the same, I mean, for some than to others. I pay taxes, and the taxes I pay are based on the R two, right? Everything is in proportion. So we buy this, R two, and then they tell me, hey, it's MU. Hello?
Hey.
Okay. It's huge.
Yep.
Huge, huge issue. So please don't do it.
Well, you, and so, just, just for the record.
Yeah.
If the building, if we did not pass this, and the building committee came forth with a MU proposal for that specific property, you'd be arguing against it.
The building committee can propose MU as a floating zone to land on that site when they come up with a plan. And the plan might be, like over at Town Hall, Old Town Hall Homes, the building dead square in the middle. The issue with, with Ox Ridge as a school versus Old Town Homes as a building is they, they knocked down the building first and then started it. I don't know what the pain is for, for Ox Ridge, but if you look at history, the old high school stayed where they built the new high school, the old Tokenique School stayed where they built the new Tokenique.
Middlesex was still in operation when they added on.
Middlesex School stayed where they built the new Middlesex School.
Yeah, it's always an argument, because, I mean, again, in, in the case of Tokenique, moving the school was net-net, it was a win-win situation.
Yeah, well.
Because for everybody, it was to move the, the school building to the corner, and it worked like a fence from the Tokenique Avenue, right? For me, is from, I, fields and woods to put me a building with three stories or more, because the three, the forty feet is the average. And we know what average means. Means here is twenty, but here can be fifty, and the average is, is forty. And then I get to see a building behind me right next, and what is that to the value of the property with the taxes I pay?
Okay.
That's it. I don't want to complicate it then.
Yeah, no.
Thank you so much for your time.
Anybody else? Sir? Sorry, I saw the him in the back of the. If you want to, he's going to go, but if you want to get, like, on deck, you're more than welcome to sit.
Yeah, Stephen Gabriel, I'm at War Pastor Lady. So now, you know, I've worked during the day, so thank you for taking your time, so this is more of an education process for me, and, you know, I get a letter, and the first thing you hit, you know, comes to mind is, all right, what am I being asked, and what am I giving up? So, you know, half my property has Henry's school behind it.
Hinley, okay, thank you.
And, you know, I bought the house, no one, new school in my backyard, and I'm fine with that, I made that decision then. So I had a brief conversation with Jerry today, trying to figure out, you know, what is the town asking you, you know? Does the town decide, you know, oh, we're going to put another story on here? Am I giving up that right? You know, do we have another, you know, why does it have to be, you know, thirteen properties? Why isn't, why isn't it case by case? What is the benefit of the town, what's the benefit to me? You know, obviously, there's a learning process, you know, do I hire, hire counsel? I don't know yet. But, you know, my concern is my property, I've been there eighteen years, and, you know, exactly what would this do? What right do I have to say, "No, I don't want a three-story Henry's school behind my house?" So that's the question.
Okay, so there's no, there's absolutely no, you know, what the Board of Education made clear during its discussion whether or not to support this, there are absolutely no plans to do dramatic renovations other than Ox Ridge at this point. Am I correct, Jamie? Like, I, I know you're not Board of Ed, but you're also no facility, you know any other progress that are in the works?
Yeah, I can't comment, because I haven't seen their master plan.
Right, but, you know, I mean, that's.
For the record, Ms. Stevenson said she can't comment.
Right, I mean, that's now, but, you know, whether it's down the future, and, you know, what rights am I giving up by allowing him to do this blanket on the thirteen school properties, which, or town properties, and one of them's in my backyard.
So to, the, the answer is, they can do it if they wanted to put a, oh, first of all, there's educational standards, so.
Right.
For elementary schools, you can't get answers.
The young kids can't go on the second floor anyway.
Exactly, exactly. So it's a very hypothetical question. We've heard the question a couple of times, why the thirteen versus one by one?
Correct.
And I think I've given an answer, does anybody else want to give a stat?
It's a pretty good question.
Yeah, so.
I mean, it's.
So we'll discuss that in deliberations, definitely.
I mean, that's, you know, and then, okay, granted, you get the, the MU, you know, ten years from now, if you got to do something to Henry's school, and then we have this process again where I can say, "Well, that's going to affect my, that will affect."
That's when you have, you step up and, you know, have your comments too as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, sir in the back, yes, sir?
I feel like I may have been introduced already. I'm Michael Alfieri, A L F I E R I, and I live at three eighty-three Mansfield Avenue, and I appreciate your comments, John, because I sit on the Ox Ridge Building Committee, I'm not here in that capacity this evening, but I wanted to share some comments, I've got some written testimony, which I'm happy to give you, but share some perspective first and foremost. My wife and I have lived at the butter, neighbor to Ox Ridge School for nearly thirty years. I would say I'm the longest neighbor of Ox Ridge School, but I can't say that with Mr. Ramses. No, sorry. But I am the pony guy.
You know the horses?
I'm no one but the horse. As soon as I say that, I become the pony guy. But I say that, you know, just as introduction, I've enjoyed living in front of the school. I have had my children go to that school, my grandchildren and grandchildren to that school, and I love living near a school. As I mentioned, I happen to be on the building committee, which has nothing to do with the prompting of the MU. But I am opposed to this broad brush, one fell swoop use of the MU. I, you know, agree with many of the comments that have been shared, and Jeremy, you've educated me, I listened to Jamie's comments, in terms of how this has worked, very well for the police station, you did an eight-foot setback, it's on the Thorndale Circus side. Circus Act. It's worked well for the library, it needed a story in the basement that wasn't counted as a story for books. And you don't want light, you don't want someone, you don't want to count it as a story. And as Mr. Ginsburg said, it's a tall building, it's on the post road, the Abutters are a cemetery. I'm Michael Josephs, no disrespect to Michael Josephs and Nielsen's. It's not surrounded by residences. And Old Town Hall, I think it's working well there as well, John, and you mentioned that was a way to move away from residences. I think when you look at Ox Ridge School, I know there is the open space, but it's very interesting, it's a unique property, it's a rare property that was created when the owner of my home sold a large portion of the property, except for two acres, so I could keep the ponies, to the town in 1961, October 27, 1961, and went down to the search office to take a look. So, a real lot could be created. Only seventy-five feet of that lot touches the street of Mansfield Avenue. The rest is surrounded by residences. Mr. Rand is one of them, they've heard some of the neighbors. I'm probably the most prominent, because my lot faces Mansfield Avenue. And when I hear the notion of eight feet or zero feet...
Are you arguing against Ox Ridge MU, or you started your comments on all thirteen properties, so I'm trying to get you...
I believe, my, my knowledge is about Ox Ridge, and my opposition is about including Ox Ridge as one of the thirteen properties. It's not that I don't care about the other twelve, but I'm not knowledgeable in the height of fire apparatus at a fire station. I'm not knowledgeable about, you know, other municipal uses that are out there. But my concern is just this broad brush, let's just include all thirteen properties. I would like not to include Ox Ridge School. I think in terms of ten acres, there is plenty of space, and I'm not speaking on behalf of any plans of the building committee. I think on nine twenty-eight-six acres, at twenty percent, you have, you know, eighty-six thousand square feet of coverage to deal with. I think of an elementary school, when state statute dictates that the LP, kindergarten and first graders be on the first floor of the school, you probably don't need...
We're getting, we're getting a little too detailed about Ox Ridge, so there's no way we're going to do twelve and carve out Ox Ridge, it's either all or none, or not none, I should say, it's all or we don't...
Fastly, Dr. Shon, it's doing one at a time.
Okay.
Just serve the town well in the past, and will continue to serve the town well in the best.
Thanks.
And at your point to Tokenick School, last, you know, project, I think Mr. Ginsburg's comments are spot on, there wasn't a need for any setbacks or height beyond the provisions of that one.
Each property is very different, so I'll just leave it at that. Do you have written testimony, went away?
What was that?
Do you have written testimony?
I do, I submit.
That'd be great.
But thank you for your time.
Yeah, definitely. Anybody else? All right, so we're going to keep this open. Again, Jerry, the hearing will be...
Tuesday, May 14, 8:00 PM, in room 206 of Town Hall.
Okay. Anything else?
Continue to, May 14, 2019, 8:00 PM, in room 206.
Thank you, everybody, those comments are helpful. And this whole zoning process was meant to be inclusionary of the public, so we're acting in our legislative capabilities, and this is going to help.
So the, the Tuesday, May 14, is the continued, is MU, or is the other part?
Everything, for every end.
Second part?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just, we have just one quick thing, can you just give us an update on our calendar when we have to be back?
The commission next meets April 23 to deal with some normal hearing items, not zoning changes, that is the commission's next meeting.
206.
Uh, yes.
How's the night looking?
April 23, not bad.
Okay, so Tuesday, April 23 is the next, now, you were giving us...
Nope, not ready.
Okay, got it.
Distribute them tomorrow.
There's nothing next to us?
Because...
Oh, oh, both of you, got it. All right, so with that, can you motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call of favor. Thank you.